Six o'clock, time for the September nineteenth City Commission meeting. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Morse?
Present.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Fantastic. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business is a proclamation for recovery month. Robin Cole, CEO of Pawnee Mental Health, will meet me up front with whoever else is coming. All right. I'll read it and give you guys a chance to comment here. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness, and prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover from substance abuse, substance use, and mental disorders. And whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends and family members, healthcare providers, and businesses, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency as they would any other health condition. And whereas almost twenty-one million Americans have at least one addiction, yet only ten percent of them receive treatment, and drug overdose deaths have more than tripled since nineteen ninety. And whereas social support is crucial, and social isolation is a risk factor for relapse, and physical distancing measures and quarantine may be especially difficult for people in recovery because they limit access to meetings of peer support groups and other sources of social connection. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of the National Drug Control Policy, and Pawnee Mental Health Services observe Recovery Month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery from substance use and mental disorders. Now therefore, I mark Hassel, the mayor of the city of Manhattan, do hereby declare September twenty twenty-three as Recovery Month in Manhattan, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recognize the importance of recovery, and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and mental disorders, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people.
Awesome.
Come on over here.
So I'll just say briefly, thank you, Mayor and Commission, for proclaiming September as Recovery Month. It's also noteworthy that Suicide Prevention Week falls during September. There's a couple of statistics that I think are relevant to that. In twenty percent of deaths by suicide, there are opiates present in the person who died. And in twenty percent of the cases of suicide, there is alcohol intoxication at the time of death. And so it's, I think, appropriate that Suicide Prevention Week and Recovery Month would be celebrated at the same time. I'd like to introduce you to Eric Martin. Eric is our Substance Use Disorder Treatment Manager here in Manhattan, and he has a few comments he'd like to make. And then I'm going to get the camera, and I'm going to let you take a picture, okay?
Thank you all for being here. Like I said, my name's Eric. I'm the Recovery Services Manager for Pawnee. And basically, as a team, we aim to treat and help people both with mental health and substance use disorders. And we really mostly aim to help that person find light in their most darkest of days. And we're grateful and honored as a team to address those dark moments and really search and find where is light, where is hope in these moments? And we believe that light shines the brightest in the darkest moments. And so we appreciate you all for being here, and go Cats.
All right. Next on the agenda is Commissioner's comments. Linda, is there anything down there?
No.
Hey, John?
Nope.
When? All right, no comments tonight. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which are items of a routine or housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously considered by the City Commission. Commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda. Commissioners, any questions or comments on the consent agenda items?
I have no comments. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Nope, nope, got to have a public comment.
Okay, when the time comes. Thank you.
All right, let's see here. We need a Commissioner for the selection committee for the Flint Hills Discovery Center stepping into the Prairie. Anybody feel strongly about?
I'm curious how long the committee would function? Is it just for the selection of the contractor consultant?
Consultant.
So when would it take place?
Should be within the next eight weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a couple of meetings, like usual, and, okay?
Gentlemen, do any of you want to do it? Hearing no comment. Since it'll be in the next couple of months, I'd be glad to do it.
Very good, thank you.
Just trying to just see what you're thinking.
Yep, we appreciate you stepping forward there. All right.
Well, I was going to make a comment on one of the items unless someone's going to move one of those items to the general agenda. Well, we can talk about it, and that's basically the budget. I mean, that to me, you know, we got it on the consent agenda, and it's like there's some little details, so we probably want to explain that because I'm not sure everybody out there has read the packet. I mean, we have, but, you know, they haven't. And I've got a couple of questions there. I mean, clearly, we lowered this to forty-nine mils, and the amount that was taken out came out of the employee benefit fund, and it came out of the bond and interest fund. And I guess my question is, you know, the general fund still increased fifteen percent, and there's nothing in the general fund that could be reduced? And of course, I already know the answer to that. We could get rid of town and gown and a number of other things that I've said every year for five years. So there's waste in that general fund, and we haven't addressed it yet.
But you're going to leave it on here?
Well, unless you want to pull it. No, I don't want to pull it. No, I just wanted to mention the budget. We did take it down to forty-nine mils originally. We had asked the staff to limit it to a six percent total revenue increase. And then later, we noticed a disparity in the appraisals for residential property as compared to commercial, so we still almost had a double-digit tax increase for residential, even though the city revenues were only going to go up by six. So at that point, we gave the direction to go down to forty-nine, which took residential to an increase of six point two six, which is more in line with what we wanted overall. It took the overall revenues for property tax down to two point nine percent total. And we had a lot of discussion about revenue neutral rate. And if you actually look at the amount of money that the city controls that they use for operations, which is taking out the police department and the library, that number is actually less revenue than the year before. So what the city controls actually is lower than the revenue neutral rate. One of the reasons we were able to do it is because our reserves are so strong, which is one of the things that happened with all the COVID money that we got. And this is a way to give a little bit back to the public that are seeing a lot of their bills go up. And at least we could keep the property tax bill down somewhat, from the city at least. So just wanted to give that little explanation.
And if I'm wrong, straighten me out here. But I assume by cutting the mill for the bond and interest fund and the employee benefit funds, those are funds that we would normally maybe put extra sales tax money in if we had it at the end of the year. So it's easier to just dump it back into there if we have extra money to make that up a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, we have other transfers that'll go into those funds.
Okay.
And we have healthy balances at the end of last year in both of those.
And so the city mill levy increase on actual things the city does was pretty low.
It was actually a decrease.
Exactly.
So revenue neutral would have been about a fifteen point six mil levy, and you have a fifteen point two mil levy for the city controlled and operations that the manager is in charge of that you all give guidance on.
So I think, you know, basically, the budget came out, you know, pretty good when you put it in that context. And of course, your slides generally show that. And if we cut it any deeper, then it is going to impact services and things of that nature. So I hope that, you know, the economic engine keeps generating those sales taxes so we can continue that next year.
All right, well, we'll throw it open. You want to say something before we open the public comment?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
I can just say afterwards.
Comments from the public, or we'll open up public comment. Any item on the consent agenda can be spoken about now. Each person will have five minutes, and we will take your comments under advisement. Anybody want to comment on claims paid, budget, services, contracts, awards for things? Okay, we'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Well, I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Your second?
Second.
Under comments, I would just caution just about using the reserve funds. I think it's difficult to build the reserve funds to, and they're at a sufficient level now that we feel good about it. And I'm not objecting to using them to backfill here, but I just, in future years, the more we tap, I guess, those reserve funds, they're, as you said, John, these were, some of this is COVID money, which is one-time money, and we can't refill it. So we, thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right, on to the public hearing. We will have a public hearing to consider petition to vacate the final plat of Prairie Village at the Highlands Unit Two. Stephanie Peterson.
Jared, sometimes Ron reduces these lights above us. We have trouble seeing the audience. Thank you, perfect, okay.
Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The public hearing for you this evening is for the vacation of a final plat, Prairie Village at the Highlands Unit Two. The location is generally in the northwest part of town, highlighted here in yellow. And then taking a closer look at what that final plat looks like, this is what's shown in Riley County GIS. So for vacating final plats, the process is that we have to provide legal notice. We did publish that as part of August twenty-sixth. That was in the Manhattan Mercury. And so then we have a public hearing before you. This is not an item that goes to Planning Board. And then part of the commission action is to make these four findings, which were outlined in the agenda summary as well. So first, as I mentioned, that legal notice has been published. That occurred that you also have to find that no rights will be injured or endangered. In this instance, or no private rights, in this instance, all of these lots are still owned by the same person. That's Lowland Company LLC. You also find that the public will not suffer any loss or inconvenience. There is no public infrastructure that's been constructed on any of these lots or in this final plat to date. And then finally, injustice to the petitioner, that the request should be granted.
So they're just wiping out the lines and starting over with something at some point in the future?
Correct.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I had, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Stephanie? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing for this vacation of this final plat. If you have any comments about it, please step forward, state your name. You've got five minutes.
Wait, I'm sorry. Did anybody ever live on that plat, or was it always?
There's no streets, there's no sewers, water, anything. It's just pasture ground. That was designed to be, it was planned to be certain lots. Now they've decided they don't want to do that.
Oh, okay.
Is that right, Stephanie?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, we will close the public comment. And Commissioners, any other questions for Stephanie or staff? If not, will someone make a motion about this item?
Mayor, I move that we approve the vacation of the final plat for Prairie Village at the Highlands Unit Two by finding that the legal notice has been given by publication that no private rights will be injured or endangered, that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, and that in justice to the petitioner, the request should be granted and adopt first reading of an ordinance vacating the final plat of the addition, Prairie Village at the Highlands Unit Two.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right, on to the general agenda, when we will consider an agreement for the lease and operation services of the T. Russell Rights Animal Shelter.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant City Manager. Happy to update you on this process and seek your concurrence for this contract. Before we get into that, I just want to acknowledge the staff at the T. Russell Rights Animal Shelter. They've been doing a fantastic job for the community. Obviously, since January, since we started talking about this, there's been some uncertainty about the future of the shelter and its operations and animal control, and just a lot of things up in the air. And we've been able to maintain a core team of folks that have stuck together to provide services to the community. Had lost a few in the process, had to recruit some more. But overall, have staff been doing a great job, and just want to recognize them for their efforts. I think they're excited to see where we go. I think they're excited about the transition to Prairie Paws, and excited about future transitions within animal control as well. And Brandon Sokol, our director, is here tonight in case there are some detailed questions about operations that he would need to answer. So as a background on some of our past discussions, in January, we came to you with some concerns and asked you for some direction on exploring outsourcing, privatizing animal service operations and leasing that facility. And so on June, we came back with seeking your authorization to publish an RFP, seeking proposals for animal shelter operators. And then in August, we brought to you a proposal from Prairie Paws Animal Shelter of Ottawa and asked you for permission to negotiate with them to finalize a contract. And that's what we're bringing back to you tonight, is that final agreement for your consideration. A brief background on Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. They're a privately funded 501(c)(3) organization founded in nineteen forty-six, so they've been in this industry for quite some time. They currently provide animal shelter services for the city of Ottawa and offer services for Franklin County and the surrounding counties in eastern Kansas. And Vanessa Cowie is the Executive Director of Prairie Paws. She is also here tonight. And when I'm done with my slides, I will pull up a few slides of hers, and she can introduce Prairie Paws to you more fully and explain some of the services that they offer. Our agreement is a combination facility lease and services agreement. And in terms of the lease, we would ask Prairie Paws to operate within our building. We would retain the name of the facilities, so it would still be the T. Russell Rights Animal Shelter. And Prairie Paws Animal Shelter would operate and provide services from that location for Manhattan. Prairie Paws would be responsible for all the utilities, basic maintenance, and any improvement projects that they would want to make to the facilities up to a certain dollar amount. And if those projects exceeded that agreed-upon cost, then they could apply to the city for assistance with making those more expensive repairs. And we would consider that, but we wouldn't have to provide that funding. And then the lease is a three-year term. It coincides with the services agreement. In terms of the shelter services that Prairie Paws would offer for the community, they provide some core services, which are the intake services and the shelter operations. So we would ask them to accept owner surrenders, pick up and stray animals dropped off by the public or animal control officers or RCPD, as well as dangerous dogs, all of which, you know, found within the city limits of Manhattan. We would ask them to provide, you know, basic evaluations of the animals that they intake, as well as basic animal care, food, water, shelter, appropriate veterinary care, which gets into shelter operations. And so we would ask them to provide that veterinary care for animals, spays, neuters, vaccinations, that type of thing, manage that population, facilitate a process for owners to reclaim animals that are brought into the shelter as strays, facilitate an adoption program so that we can rehome animals into good, loving homes, facilitate or perform euthanasia if it's required, as well as facilitate the city's pet licensing program and to encourage folks to get licensed, have their pets licensed if they are city residents. There are provisions in the agreement for additional services that are outside of those core services, and so impoundments for municipal court cases where there's animals involved in court cases or other services that we may desire in the future. We have the ability to negotiate for those services, and if the city and Prairie Paws desire to add to our agreement. There's also a number of transition services that are defined, and these are really the services that, they're the startup services. And so these are the services that would occur this year, which is that collaboration, information sharing, the Prairie Paws startup costs, you know, developing their Manhattan website, uniforms for staff, some of the actually staff wages that would occur toward the end of the year as they take over and begin operations are all part of that transition period. I know some of the questions before you in August were about reporting and the metrics that we would use to evaluate Prairie Paws' success. And so there are monthly reports that will be required, and there's eleven different metrics that are described in Exhibit B in the contract. And those include such things as the animal intake volumes, the number of animals they're intaking, the length of stay, the reclaim rates, their adoption return rates, so animals that they adopt out that come back after a short period of time because they didn't work out in the home or whatever the reason, and their live release rates, which gets to the number of euthanasias that are performed on those animals, as well as data relative to other programs they may run, special events, the pet licensing program, their volunteer and foster program numbers, as well as financial reports so that we can track their success. We would anticipate and expect them to provide a mid-year presentation during the budget cycle each summer to you, as well as an annual report at the end of each year, so that December, January timeframe of the following year, to summarize their activities and their metrics for that prior year. In terms of fees that the city would pay Prairie Paws for these services, in twenty twenty-three, we would pay thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to cover those transition services. And then starting in twenty twenty-four, the contract is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a two and a half percent escalation for inflation in the subsequent two years of the contract. And then Prairie Paws will be allowed to retain the fees that they collect from the public for the services that they offer, as well as any donations that they collect from their philanthropic fundraising efforts. We did a cost comparison of, you know, comparing the cost of the contract versus the cost of the twenty twenty-four budget. And in both scenarios, we would retain animal control services, employees, and the expenses associated with offering animal control within the community. And we've also factored in those employee benefits. So as a percentage of the wages that are being paid, we do go from ten and a half employees under the city's model to three with just representing those animal control officers. So there's significant savings on that employee benefit side as well. But total, we anticipate about a ninety-eight thousand dollar savings on the city budget by moving to this contracted model. We also anticipate there's significant, I guess, non-financial benefits. They're financial in a way, but, you know, they don't show up on the balance sheet just in terms of the efficiencies we think we can gain from all the support services that the city offers that no longer have to support the animal shelter operation. So that's the time from HR, from finance, from the city attorney's office, from communications, from building services, other city manager functions that no longer have to be directed to support the operations of the shelter. So tonight, we would ask you to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with Prairie Paws for the transition services and the operations and lease of the shelter facilities. And if that contract is approved, we would begin transition services immediately. We've got, you know, the rest of the year to kind of get all those details in place to be able to hand off operations fully, and Prairie Paws to be able to start offering these services for the community. In October, we would come back to you for a work session to review Chapter Six of the city ordinances, which relate to animals and the animal shelter. There's some ordinances that we would like to amend as we head into this transition period. And then in November, December, we would return for the first and second reading of those ordinances. And then mid to late December, Prairie Paws would begin limited operations. You know, they would actually, at that point, take over staff. They would be in the building, offering services by the end of the year in some capacity. And then in January, we would anticipate they would be offering full-service operation throughout twenty twenty-four. I'm happy to answer questions about that now, or I can introduce Vanessa Cowie, and she can provide a little more background on Prairie Paws.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. I do have a couple. Thank you. Good presentation, thank you. With regard to the metrics, are you, will the city administration meet with the, in essence, contractor? Will you be scheduling periodic meetings with regard to just updates and beyond the eleven metrics you're looking at?
I would expect there would be frequent communications, yes, either with Vanessa or her designee, who will be managing the shelter locally. But I think those monthly reports and then annual reports, I think, will be a key part of how we gauge their success. But yes, we would expect them to be responsive to our questions and communicate with us about any issues that they're encountering or that we're hearing about from the public. You know, we'll go straight to them and ask them to provide some more information about those kind of situations.
I would think communication would be critical.
It will be.
With a transition like this, which is wholesale. And I wondered about complaints. Your complaints are not in your criteria that you would receive information about. It's not one of your eleven metrics.
Correct.
Put it that way.
I guess we would handle complaints on a case-by-case basis. And certainly, that's where the communication and a good relationship with the contractor would come in. I think we do ask them to list out exceptions if they aren't able to take an animal that they would otherwise normally be contractually required to accept. So let's say that they're full, they can't take any more stray animals or owner surrenders. We would expect them to communicate that to us as it's happening, which those are the kinds of situations that might generate complaints from the public, who, you know, who come to the shelter, "I tried to drop off my animal, they said no." Well, you know, we want to know when those kind of scenarios are happening and have conversations about them so that we can keep track of those and make sure that those are being done for reasons that are legitimate, as well as make sure that Prairie Paws is working to find solutions to that capacity problem, as an example.
I imagine the city has its own experience with complaints, so you'll have some criteria to evaluate what is or isn't coming in from the public. Because ultimately, there's a customer satisfaction, citizen satisfaction here, too, with the shelter. And so I'm especially interested in that citizen satisfaction. I'm sure financial savings are also. I wanted, let's see, what's another question? Well, I don't see it, so. So I I really feel like this is kind of experimental. I don't see that there are a lot of shelters and shelter operations being privatized away from city government. At least we didn't get many bids. So I would be, I I think it's important that we pay attention here and as we hand it off and just be extra sensitive. But otherwise, I sounds, it seems to me that you've put this together well, and I would like to, you know, I appreciate the mid-year report as well as the annual report to the commission on how operations are going.
Yeah, I appreciate the the questions. We we certainly want the relationship to be successful and to
Exactly.
Provide high-quality customer service, you know, we would expect Prairie Paws to do that. There are, there are multiple communities that I think do have private relationships, whether it's a fully privatized, you know, the Casey Pet Project, or or through a humane society like Lawrence has, obviously Ottawa has a relationship with with Prairie Paws, and Vanessa may be able to speak more to how she sees the industry transforming. But we'll monitor over the next three years of the term of this contract, track those metrics, track those complaints, and see kind of how how things are going, and we'll have the opportunity to reevaluate at the end of that agreement to see how we would like to proceed.
All right, very good. Well, let's hear from you, Vanessa. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Wyatt promised me all I would have to do was click, and so.
He promises a lot.
My name is Vanessa Cowley. I'm the executive director of Prairie Paws, and I was at an earlier commission meeting, and I and I got up and introduced myself then that as a representative of an organization that this is a big benefit to. So there's definitely a benefit to our organization to scale. I do see many municipalities moving this way. There's a lot of municipalities that have been following this story here, and they've been reaching out to me to try and be the next one. So you probably are the first of a few, but I see this happening in a wave, especially in in the Midwestern states right now. So there's a lot of benefits to everyone. Just to briefly talk about our organization, we have been around since 1946. This is our surgery suite, and this is one of our veterinarians performing surgery there. We serve residents across three counties in east central Kansas. We have the core programs that we provide are very, very similar to what's in the scope of services, so this really is our wheelhouse. Everything in that scope of services is what we do today and what we feel that we do very well. We do have supplemental programs that are not outlined in the scope of services that we feel are still important to the community, so low-cost spay-neuter, TNR for community cat issues to try and reduce overpopulation of of those free-roaming cats, as well as a really robust education system. So we believe in bite prevention in the schools, increasing public safety and those kinds of things, which are not outlined in the scope of services, but we hope to be able to provide that, not using any tax dollars. So those are programs that you're not paying us to do, that we hope that we can also provide this community to really do some holistic programming. We feel that that's the most successful way to to tackle a lot of these issues. We are very data-driven, which is why there's 11 metrics in that proposal, because those are the ones that I feel most important about. And, you know, all the direction that we're trying to move those in is reducing that length of stay, which does save us costs. So we are financially incentivized to have a lower length of stay, but it is better for the animals and it's better for the people that care for them as well. Maintaining a low euthanasia rate, that is something that's really important to citizens of Kansas, it's important to our organization, and so that's something that we strive for. Wait times is really one of your customer satisfaction metrics that we don't have listed, but those we measure internally. It's not something that we're able to report on very well yet, because some people are applying through different models right now, but we actually track from the minute someone asks us to take in their pet, how long it takes us to take that in. With Franklin County right now, we're less than five days from someone requesting that service from us. And so we are really focused on high quality of care and staff retention. And so we do feel that in the private model, we're a little bit better, little bit better situated to deal with some of the challenges with hiring that the government, local government struggles to do. We can be really flexible when it comes to staff retention, and especially with some of the financial incentives that we've put in place. So these are some of the benefits and some of the things that we're focusing on right now. Leveraging the private model really does reduce costs, and so that's why we're seeing a lot of government partners reach out to us now, is once we build a strong fundraising program, we can reduce the pressure on public funds. In Franklin County, only 15% of our budget comes from tax dollars, the rest is all privately raised. By merging these two volumes of animals and volumes of community members, we're actually eligible for more grant funding now. So if this is approved tonight, the volume of animals that our organization serves will double, and that will make us more eligible for grant funding, which then we can do to reduce the pressure on public funds even further. More flexibility with policymaking and personnel management, so we're governed by an eight-member board of directors, and we can put a policy change in front of them and usually get something approved in 30 days. And I know that's a bit of a struggle in local government, you can't move that quickly. We would hope that we can partner with multiple municipalities, so right now we have about six or seven government partners, mostly in the Ottawa-Franklin County area. But if we can get a Riley County location up and running and really get some volume through this facility and a strong donor base here, as well as other parts around the state, we can lower the cost for all of those communities and then increase the service to all those community members. So the regional model is really the only way to do this affordably, and so that's why we're pushing for this. And then we have just added a lot of robust investment strategies, so we're trying to be a little bit more financially sustainable rather than relying on too many government funds. That's the end of my presentation, but I'd be happy to stand for questions.
So when you said down there about you're you're not contracted to do spay-neuters, so you're still working, going to be working with K-State, and their students are still going to be coming over and doing that kind of stuff, correct or not?
Yes, correct.
What is it that the contract says you don't have to do? Help me understand.
We don't have to provide any low-cost spay-neuter to publicly-owned animals as part of this agreement, but we do feel that that helps us lower the cost of this scope of services that you are paying us to provide.
Okay, so if anybody, so the op, the opportunity to do low-cost spay and neuter, for me to bring my my animal out there to have it done for half the price of the veterinarian, that's going away?
That is what we provide in Ottawa right now. We provide that service in Ottawa. We would like to provide that here in Manhattan out of that location.
But not to start with?
Not to start with.
Okay, that's fine. But if an animal comes in and needs to be spayed or neutered, you'll still call up K-State, they'll send somebody over and they'll still?
K-State doesn't have an agreement to do publicly-owned animals right now at T-Russell.
Okay, come on over here. What's, what, okay, what have we been doing about that or not?
So we currently spay-neuter all animals that are owned by the city that come in through the shelter process, whether that's a stray that's been held for three days or an owner surrender that's surrendered to us. Before we adopt that animal out, we spay or neuter that animal.
Okay.
What, and and that would be the expectation for Prairie Paws to continue that service for animals that they own that they're looking to adopt out
Okay.
To Manhattan. This low-cost spay-neuter service that Vanessa is speaking of would be an additional service offered to not Prairie Paws animals, to your personal animal as an option for for community members. It's a service they offer in Ottawa.
But they're not going to offer it immediately here in Manhattan?
Not, not right away.
Not right away. Okay, but we're, they'll still, if an animal shows up there and you're going to try to adopt it out, you'll still spay and neuter it?
Yes.
Try to get it out into the public. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next one. So if you, if we're full, or do you have the ability to take some of the animals over to Ottawa, or if we don't have any animals to adopt here, you can bring some of the Ottawa animals over? Is that part of the plan too?
That is part of the plan. It gives both entities much more flexibility with capacity management and the and the ability to move animals. So if we're doing it as some kind of a adoption special in Ottawa, we can move some animals from the Manhattan location. Or sometimes you just have not enough variety at one single location. I hate to talk about it like retail, but it's really a fact that you want to have a variety of sizes and and different breeds of dogs, and sometimes one entity is just stuck with the same type of dog. And if we can swap some, it's, we can work into the consumerism of it and benefit both locations.
All right. So as far as the current employees of the shelter, you're probably planning on trying to retain most of them, I would assume, or how's, what's your kind of plan, or you got your own people, you're bringing over, what's the plan?
Our intent is to retain 100% of that team, because we feel that that minimizes the disruption to the community members the most. They are the best trained to run that facility, so we hope to retain 100% of them. Our position descriptions don't align perfectly with the jobs that they're in right now, but they will all be given preference with positions with us, and and we will ensure that no one's without a job.
Okay, all right. And then shortly after the first year, you'll get started with some fundraising things, and then hopefully that'll become a big part of?
Yeah, you'll probably get tired of seeing our brand and being invited to all of our events, because we're very robust on the fundraising side, especially if we can try and reduce the pressure on those public funds, then you're going to see galas and golf tournaments, and you're going to get stuff in the mail, and I hope you put $10 in and send it back.
All right. That's all I got for now. Who else have questions?
Yeah, I have one question. You're doing pet licensing, you know, cats and dogs. How's that going to change what we're currently doing? Is customer service going to be out of that business?
It it won't really see any disruption to that current program. There are some changes that have to happen in the ordinances to allow us to operate that program for you, and maybe there's some recommendations for some fee changes. But as far as the delivery of that program, as from the citizen's side, there shouldn't be a lot of difference.
So you still come to City Hall and pay your fee? I mean, that's what the question is. Right now, you know, I've got three cats that I got from the shelter, and and when I license them, they get their rabies shot every year. I, you know, sometimes the vet will send it in, because we set up that program, but most of the time, I just take the piece of paper down here and and pay the, pay the fee. Is that, is that going to change? That's the question.
I think, I think that's still an option to to remain for the public as a location to to pay those fees. We also accept payment for pet licensing fees at the shelter. I know there's, there's other options that may come in the future as well, online options and other things that Prairie Paws may want to develop. We have shifted all the paperwork and all the, you know, the kind of the administrative side of the pet licensing to the shelter already. And so the, it used to be the customer service here in City Hall managed and kept all those records. Earlier this year, we shifted that to the shelter staff and trained them how to do that, so they already are managing kind of the backend of the program. But the customer service-facing side, you know, could still exist at City Hall as well as the shelter, as well as maybe other options.
Okay, that makes sense. So so most of the labor's gone down there, and that's, that's a, yep, that's a good answer. And then my other question is, we we have these various agreements, like with Pot County, I think the sheriff there can bring in an animal and it's paid, you know, for the animal. We don't have a good agreement with Riley County, and there were some agreements with other cities, so are those going to be updated, I guess is the term to use?
So we, we intend to terminate those agreements, and as we do that, introduce Prairie Paws to those communities and encourage them to work with Vanessa to establish new agreements with Prairie Paws, so that those communities or counties or whoever could bring, could still bring their animals to the T-Russell Wright Shelter. But we envision new agreements needing to be drafted between those entities and Prairie Paws as the operator.
And we'll be out of that loop then.
We, we would be.
The city won't be really involved in that.
The city would be, yes.
And that makes, that makes sense, because I know those are a little bit, they need updated, so just starting over is a good plan. I don't have a problem.
Contracts would would be updated, even if we weren't talking about having this conversation. We would look to cancel and update those agreements, so this is, the alternative now is work with, work with Prairie Paws, they'll be able to, you know, provide you sort of the services that you want.
Okay, and then my understanding, you know, people still question, you know, the animal control officers, and I guess the way that's going to work, they're out of the shelter, and they're under, I guess, the city manager's office now. That's your problem, right? As part of it.
Your opportunity.
So, so we have, so so we have three of them there, but essentially, they're going to operate inside the city limits only. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. So the, the conversations we're having internally is to move animal control officers into code enforcement, fire department area. It's, it's somewhat similar to the code enforcement, building code aspect. It's also, there's also great relationships between Manhattan Fire Department and RCPD, and so we think that, we still think that the long-term strategy could be to move animal control to PD. The immediate future is we're, we're still in planning that, but by the end of the year, we would look to potentially move those three staff members under the supervision of fire code services. They would operate as they do right now within animal, within the city limits to enforce the city's ordinances related to animals.
Okay, that makes sense, and then there can be some further discussions on what the county wants to do, and, you know, on that.
Correct.
I understand that. That's, sounds good to me. And then my other question is, you have these supplemental programs, and I've always been interested in this trap-neuter-release thing. In fact, there's a group of K-State veterinary students that started a thing called Community Cats, and they haven't really gotten it off the ground too far, but it sounds like you might be able to partner with them to, to assist with that, and I think, you know, that that's something the city was never able to pursue, and I believe that's an excellent way to get rid of a lot of the excess cats we have. That's why I have three through the program. So, so I hope we can get that off the ground, because we do have a couple places in the city where we've got quite a few feral cats running around, so.
We're, we're, we're good at that program. We've been doing it since 2016, and we do between 400 and 600 cats a year through that program in Franklin County with no cost to taxpayers.
And that'll make, that'll make a huge dent in the, in, in the amount of cats, at least, that go through the, go through the shelter. So.
Will Prairie Paws be negotiating the contract like with RCPD or K-State, or does Fort Riley enter the picture at all as local jurisdiction?
K-State, yes, we'll have to form an agreement with K-State. Our Ottawa location has an existing agreement with K-State now. We'll probably have to amend that to allow for services to happen at this location.
Uh huh, okay.
The agreement requires us to make sure that City of Manhattan is our priority customer, because releasing this facility from you, it's a city building. We can enter into agreements with other communities, even communities that you don't currently have relationships with, as long as that we prioritize the City of Manhattan and its residents.
I'm curious about, there's a provision in here, after a certain period of time, you'll be looking at new construction, and and the city would be involved in that. So I was curious what, what you see as needed that isn't there now?
And that's hard to say. I really think this three years is going to be a good time to learn all those things. You know, this first three-year agreement, we need to learn how our programs operate in that space and make sure that the team has what they need and that they're feeling supported. I, I think we got that section of the contract from another contract where a private partner had gone into a city-run building and then basically had champagne taste on the, on the city's budget. And so this was really to protect the city from us going in there and making all these crazy demands, and, you know, our cats need all these, you know, high-dollar enclosures. It was a, it was a way to make this more of a fair partnership, that if we do feel that there needs to be upgrades, significant upgrades made, that we're going to be matching those funds and and kind of working together to fund that project. But I don't know what we anticipate those to be, but your HVAC could go out, your, something catastrophic could happen, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
I don't have any questions. I do have some comments when we're ready for that.
All right, thank you. We'll throw this open to the public. If anybody in the public would care to comment on this agreement of services for the shelter with Prairie Paws, please come forward, state your name. All right, everybody's good. All right, we'll close public comment. What other comments do you have, Commissioners?
I'd just say that I really like this approach. I like the regional aspects of it, getting the economies of scalable from cost and capacity. I like that it is, you know, a private nonprofit that can do the fundraising and get, there's a lot of people passionate about animals, and I think they can really tap into that. I think being a government entity, the idea of donating money to the government doesn't appeal to a lot of people, so that gives them an, you know, an advantage there. Also, I like that, you know, we're out of the, kind of out of the business of negotiating with the other entities, and they can take it over and work with, work with the different counties and cities and can do the arrangements the way they want to. And for our own internal things with animal control, I like it going to code into the fire department. We still are looking at it with RCPD, and Director Pete is still very open to work on that, and I think long-term, that would be the best way to go. We'll just have to see how that works out.
Yeah, I really like the, the budget stability that this should bring. Now we're going to know for the next three years pretty much for what, what the animal shelter is going to cost us, and And the way that the prices have been kind of escalating over the last few years, that should be a big potential savings. And, yeah, I think something like this just makes, it's the kind of public-private partnership that makes a lot of sense. The city's, yeah, it gets out of a business that's not really essential, city services, into an organization that focuses on this only. And like I said, bringing in the ability to raise funds and stuff that the city doesn't really, isn't good at or can't really do will really make a big difference, I think, in their operations, operating budget out there.
I have one question. As Prairie Paws negotiates with the other entities, does the city have to approve every contract? No? Okay, alright.
I just wanna say, you know, long-term, I agree with what Mayor and John have said that, you know, we've had a lot of people concerned about the budget and long-term increase. And when you think about this kind of outsourcing project, it should have long-term impact on the budget for '24, '25, '26. So that's a significant change. And I mean, the number thrown out was $98,000. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's the start. $98,000 less is a good thing for the citizens. And then when you add the supplemental services that are gonna be put in there, you know, we've lowered the cost, but we've increased the services. And I use the TNR thing as a good example. And then you've got multiple intangibles and the Parks and Rec director's back there. And one intangible is, he doesn't have to worry about the animal shelter anymore. And that's gotta be a plus because we can focus more on Parks and Rec, which is what everybody seems to be concerned about. So I think this is an absolute great plan. It's a win for the city.
Do I make a motion?
Okay, I'll move that...
Try that again one more time with your speaker.
Got it wrong. I move that we authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Prairie Paws Animal Shelter Incorporated of Ottawa, Kansas in the amount of $13,850 for transition services and $350,000 annually for animal shelter operations and lease of the animal shelter facilities.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. To approve the motion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hattasaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Item number two, consider adopting the 2023 Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan for the City of Manhattan. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. We were before you back in April presenting a lot of our findings from our self-evaluation that we've conducted, been conducting over the last year. We've evaluated quite a lot of public infrastructure, facilities, parks, trails, as well as we've done some internal looking at our departments and how we're interacting and serving the public from an ADA, an accessibility standpoint. So there's not a lot of new information necessarily that you're gonna see here tonight because that, you know, in-depth overview we gave you in April had a lot of those specifics on some of the areas and the barriers we were identifying and seeing in our evaluation. But we finalized all of those reports. We have, you know, every sidewalk, mile of sidewalk and curb ramp all has a specific report. So we have hundreds of reports for the facilities and all those things that have been evaluated and we've packaged those into our transition plan and presented to you all today a resolution to adopt that plan. So our consultants with Kimley Horn, Aaron Urick is here and gonna kind of give you an overview of just everything that's in the packet that you're considering tonight, as well as Kristi Avalos with Accessology. Following, you know, potential adoption of the transition plan, you'll note in the plan and in the resolution that it authorizes the city manager to designate a transition plan coordinator. That would be me. So I'm going to be creating an internal staff committee where we're going to be, at least annually, if not more, reviewing this plan, identifying future budget years where we can address and eliminate barriers that are identified within this Phase One self-evaluation and look to continue to do evaluations on a right-of-way that we weren't able to evaluate during this phase. So I'll let Aaron present and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good to see you all again. This will be a quick overview because I know you've seen this information, but we did wanna remind everyone what was in the final plan as well as the final budget numbers because I know that was of interest last time. So we're gonna quickly go over what was done during this phase. We'll cover the implementation cost estimates as well as the implementation schedule and then talk about what the next steps look like, specifically the improvement implementation as well as the remaining evaluations. So as a reminder, for the departmental reviews, we did have a select number of departments that we looked at for their program, services, and activities review and those are listed here on the slide. It included the airport, city manager's office, finance, human resources, legal services, fire services, and Parks and Rec. For the select facilities that were reviewed, we had four buildings, 11 parks, 10.3 miles of paved trails, 19 signalized intersections, 25 sidewalk corridors, and 225 unsignalized intersections, including driveways along those sidewalk corridors. That also included all the curb ramps that were associated with those intersections. For public outreach, we did have our ADA advisory group. We met with that group three separate times. We had our most recent meeting with them this evening. We received a lot of great feedback and they also helped us understand how we could better reach the general public with some of the feedback that we were seeking. And so we solicited additional feedback from the public using a web survey and a web map. And so summary information regarding that input has been included in the transition plan as well. For the update to the transition plan, as Jared mentioned, the roles and responsibilities of both the ADA 504 Coordinator and the ADA Transition Plan Implementation Coordinator, roles and responsibilities are defined. The grievance procedure and policy and form, as well as the ADA notice, were reviewed and that is documented in the transition plan and linked to the city's website. And then the recommended prioritization criteria for the facilities that we looked at is included in the transition plan and listed out. And any exceptions and exemptions that we had for facilities that were reviewed are included in the facility reports. The multi-year budget that I'll show you here in a few slides is also something that was finalized in the transition plan update. Staff training, these are the four topics that staff has decided that it would be of most interest and most benefit to them. We originally thought we were gonna have this in October, but it's looking like November is going to be the best timeframe for everyone. So we are getting that on the calendar and this is something that we will be wrapping up Phase One with. For just the facilities that were evaluated in Phase One, the costs that you see up here are representative of those only. It does not include anything that was not evaluated. So the big-ticket items that you can see there are going to be the public rights-of-way. And so the other items are also listed out for a total of a little over $11 million. We also broke this down by the priorities for each of the facilities. This is just one factor that you can use, the high, medium, and low in how the projects are going to be implemented. But we are summarizing that here because that's referenced in each of the individual facility reports. So we did wanna show the breakdown of that. And then the implementation schedule that's been proposed by staff for the Phase One facilities that were evaluated is shown on the slide. So it's a 10- to 25-year program, depending on the facilities. And one thing that we did wanna remind everyone is that this is a living document. So as you go into your annual budgeting process each year, this is a goal, but it could be lower, it could be higher. And that's something that Jared's internal committee is gonna be trying to figure out how to best implement this and where the dollars are coming from. So for next steps, we wanted to remind everyone of the overall transition planning process and where that relates to final construction and barrier removal. So the ADA transition plan is just the master plan for accessibility, like your other master plans. So your comprehensive plan, your storm water management master plan, Sunset Zoo master plan, airport master plan, and Parks and Recreation master plan. It's just one of those other master plans on the list. So it's a document that we will hope guide you in the future as you remove these barriers to access. We did wanna remind you that there's also the steps of design and that will lend itself to finalizing the cost estimates that we provided. So that will need to be done prior to any construction. So you will know the exact dollar amount that you will be spending on these improvements after that design has been completed. And then the final step after construction is also the progress monitoring. So that's something that staff will be taking on, is making sure that as projects are completed, they will be documented and the transition plan can be updated regularly. And as I mentioned, this is a document that should be used in the annual budgeting process. It's something that we wanna make sure is referenced regularly so you can make sure that you are removing those barriers to access as you complete projects. The order in which these projects can be completed is gonna depend on several factors and that is gonna be entirely up to the city. We've listed a few of those here. Existing complaints that you may receive from the public definitely should be looked at and considered in the implementation and possibly brought to the top of the list if they were further down. And then the Department of Justice priorities, available funding. If you already have funding programmed for some of these, it's simply gonna be making sure that the identified barriers are included in the scope of those existing projects. Severity of noncompliance, proximity to pedestrian attractors. And those last two, we have included in that prioritization schedule that was included in the transition plan and referenced in each of the facility reports. And then any program, services, and activities that are hosted at any particular location would also be a reason to potentially fix those facilities sooner than other facilities that may not have programs offered at them. And as a reminder of the facilities that still need to be evaluated, there's still 10 buildings, 21 parks. We did complete all the paved standalone trails, so those have been completed. There's 45 signalized intersections and then 175 miles of sidewalk corridors remaining. And reminding everyone of what those particular facilities are, the unevaluated buildings are listed on this slide. And the unevaluated parks and Parks and Recreation facilities are listed here. For the public rights-of-way, based on a previous inventory that the city had completed, we estimate there's roughly 3,200 curb ramps that still need to be evaluated along those sidewalk corridors, included within that 175 miles and also those 45 signalized intersections. So that's 175 miles. As it was with this phase, it would include the entire pedestrian path of travel. And so with that, I'd like to entertain any questions and we do have the document available if you have any specific questions related to that.
Alrighty. So on the public rights-of-way sidewalks and things like that, what needs to happen on most of those improvements? Or what would be an example of something that if we've got 4,000 of them, it's gonna cost $4 million or whatever that slide was, what is the improvement that needs to happen at each one of those? If you can give me an idea. I just don't know what, how, since the ADA was passed 20 years ago and we did all of those curb cut, or those curb things on the sidewalks, down to the streets at the time. And I'm sure every subdivision has had to have done that going forward. How there can be 4,000 things or that's $14 million, whatever that number is, what exactly has to be fixed or improved or made right that didn't happen over the last 20 years?
So sometimes it's about the maintenance of the facilities because you are required to maintain your accessible routes and in accessible condition. So they may have been compliant at the time that they were constructed, but over time, tree roots may have heaved the sidewalk, created cracks and other issues in the concrete itself. And so typically, the recommendation for any sidewalk issues that we found related to the structural issues are gonna be to remove and replace the sidewalk. And that is the majority of what we found out there due to various reasons. So it may have been a cross-slope issue, it may have been the cracking of the concrete, but all of that lends itself to removal and replacement.
And Jared, that's, if it's in front of your house, that's the homeowner's responsibility, in theory.
In theory, yes. We do need to consider how we want to, over time, improve our transportation system with our sidewalks. And we're doing it right now with curb ramps, you know. In the street sales tax question that was passed by the voters, when we're redoing a street, we're also updating those curb ramps. In the future, as we look to renew that sales tax or look for other revenue sources while we're working in those areas and we know that there's a section of a community that has very outdated, you know, sidewalk infrastructure, can we get in there and update that as well? It's something we're gonna need to evaluate. And there are certain projects right now, public projects, that we are going in and updating those sidewalks when we're doing it.
Okay. So we're hoping to be able to help with the funding of some of that stuff for... Depending on the neighborhood and what the problem is, I suppose. Okay. What are some of the DOJ priorities currently? Or are you just anticipating the DOJ to have some ADA priorities at some point soon? What can you tell us about that?
So the priorities right now for facilities are making sure, number one, that someone can park in the accessible parking and then get from that accessible parking along an accessible route into the building and then get through the accessible entrance and then have access to goods and services within the facility. So the priorities are that order of operations to get from the outside to the inside.
Thank you. Okay, what other questions do you have for Aaron?
In this area, is there, is there any, is there much grant availability for fixing any of these things?
There is definitely funding opportunities and we have presented some of those in the transition plan and that is also what Jared and his team will be digging into a little bit more to make sure that they're aware of what's available and if the city qualifies.
In this sidewalk discussion, the way I understand it too, it isn't just those areas where it's, the sidewalk is kind of got that cutting in it so you can get up and down easily in a wheelchair, but also just the sidewalk itself that's got so many cracks in it, you can't even move over it. That's assumed included in your...
Yes, the cost estimates include the sidewalk segments, any pedestrian street crossings, any pedestrian driveway crossings, and all of the associated curb ramps. So it is anywhere that you would need to travel as a pedestrian along that corridor.
Like a crosswalk in Anderson, down there. Obviously, and you talked about it, that that one technically is the property owner's responsibility to fix, even though, you know, you talked about how we've been doing it and we might look at doing it. Is there any other aspects of this study that are in there that are responsibility of property owners? Or is it pretty much limited to that sidewalk intersection area?
I think that's...
I think that would be it. This is the sidewalk. It's kind of the only gray area there that we've noted. Really, everything else is within...
Within the city's ownership to take care of it and get it done. This may be outside the scope of this here, but I'm gonna ask it. Anyway, you mentioned about the grant opportunities. I know for the environmental side, the EPA has those brownfield studies can go in and even private people can help with getting a lot of remediation done with different grant things. Is there similar grant opportunities for private businesses that have, you know, ADA challenges that may be grandfathered in or whatever for an older building to, you know, get grant opportunities to get those corrected?
I would like to defer to Kristi Avalos with Accessology to speak on that.
Never met an accessologist before, so...
Well, now you have. Yeah, there are a lot of different types of grants out there that are available for building owners. As a matter of fact, for your businesses that are not city-related, IRS Tax Code 190 allows them up to $15,000 per building per year for barrier removal. So there's a lot of different opportunities that can help the businesses around the community.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, I would just offer that, you know, even though it's not in our transition plan, and maybe it is, I mean, one of the regular duties that we have as a risk reduction and code enforcement is when you get a building permit, they check all that stuff. So they have that same parking and pathway to their private building that we have for public buildings. And that's where our risk reduction gets involved with them for those improvements.
I'm just saying, sometimes people don't do improvements just because of that. Because they know, they'd like to improve something, but they're worried about... Because they know, they'd like to improve something, but they're worried about the extra cost of getting all that ADA compliant if they go in for a permit, and so they just don't, don't do improvements.
Linda, when?
Yeah, I, I'm curious about, this is a, a good list and a good start for phase one. And, but because this one could take up to twenty-five years, funding-wise. My question is, how do we ever get to phase two? And the other next set of buildings and programs that we need, that need to be reviewed?
No, we certainly need to do a phase two at some point where we continue to evaluate our infrastructure so we can have a full transition plan. I, I'm not sure we ever get to a point where it's, we're a one hundred percent barrier-free community, but that's what we're trying to be. And that's what the goal is and that's what every community's goal should be. So we're gonna continue to, you know, find ways to, whether that's in-house or continuing to work with Kimley Horn to do those evaluations. And then annually, we're going to be, you know, checking off those projects that are being complete. There's projects that we're gonna be doing in the community that aren't on the evaluation, but they're being done right now and being brought up to an ADA standard so we can add those to our plan as well to keep track of the projects that are outside of, of those areas.
When would you anticipate a phase two? Is this a slow boat? Or is this, I mean, I.
I, I don't want to lose, lose track in progress. So I, I, I hope in the next couple of years, we can get a phase two going.
That would be great. I, I'm just really, I, I was here back when ADA passed and I've watched all of the progress we've made, our curb cuts and, you know, we have. I, I'm impressed, at least. But what I didn't realize was things had slowed, you know, and we weren't really evaluating anymore. I don't know what I expected. I think it was just out of sight, out of mind. And so I'm really, you know, I'm glad that we're having to look at this again and put it back on our radar. We don't have to do it immediately or next year, but we have to make progress at it. And, and that's a healthy thing for us to do, a kind of a self-review and a self-evaluation as we go on. So I'm encouraged about this project and I'm glad, I'm sure that the disabled community. And I know that we still have a lot of curbs that don't have curb cuts, I think. I don't think we've successfully replaced them all. There are too many. But that's the kind of progress we want to make. I do have a question about some of our trails that are not improved. They're pretty, maybe there's some fine limestone rock on them and they're, when it rains, they, you're kind of get stuck in, stuck in it. What's, how do you fix that and about with these? So this is, what do you do when it's raining, when it's rained? And the standard isn't the same as when the land is dry?
Sure. A lot of times, the, the answer is gonna be adding a bonding agent. So whether you're, you've got crushed granite or with a bonding agent, it, it doesn't wash away in the rain and it, it stays more firm and stable.
Ours is limestone.
Yeah, which is.
Yeah, not, we don't have that much granite, but we do have a lot of limestone. Okay, thank you. Well, progress, that's important. Thank you.
When, you got a question?
I don't have a question. I just, you know, a couple of things still, you know, the, the idea that we've got enough money to fix all this is ludicrous. We don't. I mean, so, so when you go into this phase two, you know, I've got like four things I'd recommend. One, you know, I'm on the ATA board and I, and I discussed at their meeting last week, they've got the ability to get a lot of grants around the bus stops for this particular thing. So that's gotta be a key component and, and of course, we just did that by the library. Of course, that came out pretty good. And the ATA bus guys, you know, they, I know a couple of the drivers, they drive around a lot of the people that, you know, have to use wheelchairs and things. And so that means, in my mind, we, we've got to take, say we have five hundred thousand dollars a year that we devote to this, that what we have to do is target it to the right location. So that if, you know, if Wind Butler's in a wheelchair and I live on Windsong, the city needs to know that because a curb cut on Windsong fixed is gonna directly benefit me if I'm in a wheelchair. But fixing it on some other street where I don't live is not relevant. So it's very important to me that we come up with a plan to target this and, and, and get it to the places where it's really gonna benefit, you know, somebody. And then, of course, the other part here is any new construction, I think that's just built into it. Like what we did in Aggieville, I mean, you know, the rally house, you know, had that terrible step there and, and all of that is, you know, really, really nice. Now it's brand new. So that's gotta be built into anything we do. And then lastly, if you collect complaints, that would be the only time I think I would have Code go out and do enforcement on the individual homeowner. You know, like, like if, you know, I've got a bunch of sidewalk there on Windsong and if it collapses and there's somebody that has to use that to get to school and I don't fix it on my own, then Code ought to come cite me. But I don't want to see Code just randomly run through the city and cite everybody because as I've walked the city streets, our sidewalks, you know, just over the years with the roots and the ones, it just isn't gonna work. And so to me, that's unrealistic. But, but so, you know, focus complaints, again, that's targeting. And I think if we, we build those components into this plan, I don't think the federal government would complain about it and it's the best you can do. You know, if you invest a minimum of half a million a year and if, if things go well, we can invest more. But it makes absolutely no sense to take lots of money and just try to say, okay, we're gonna fix every curb cut in town because it's not gonna have the desired effect. And that's, that's just my analysis of it.
When our transition plan team meets annually to look at those priorities, we're gonna look at all of those factors. What Kimley Horn's provided from a priority standpoint, based on each individual barrier, that's gonna be one evaluation that we look at. Then we're gonna look at complaints focused in the area. We're also gonna look at the cost and the scale of things. I, I don't think too, in, in the budget, it's going to, you're, you're not just gonna see one line item, right, for five hundred thousand dollars ADA improvements because we're gonna look at multiple sources, multiple projects. There's a lot of projects already in the queue that are in this, this list. You know, Seco Park is a good example of a park that they evaluated that we have a separate funding source that's going to probably address a lot of issues that were cited in the baseball fields and in the tennis courts in those areas. So we don't necessarily have to worry about where to find funds to fix those things, but there are others that there is a gap. So we're gonna certainly look at all those, all those things annually to make that determination, not just start at the top, work our way down type of thing.
Yeah, one of, over the weekend, I was at a conference where they did a HIPAA presentation and it's another one of those federal government things where the big thing the speaker said is if you're making, if you're showing intent to comply, that, that keeps you out of the big, big fines and stuff like that with, when it comes to HIPAA stuff. So I, I know one of our concerns is how the federal government is gonna look at us if we're not, if we're not trying to do anything, they're gonna kind of drop the hammer on you. But if you've got a plan, you've got, you've got steps, you've showing things, showing some progress and an intent to comply, yeah, I think hopefully that'll keep, keep them happy and, and as we continue to move forward, get a little bit more momentum somehow, so. All right, thanks for the presentation. We're gonna throw it open for public comment. If anybody has a question or concern about this, come on up to the podium, state your name, sign in on the sheet there with your name and address and you can start after that.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jacob Stoltz and I just have a couple of questions about the nature of what counts as a sidewalk. Because I know, like, the stones, the stone things are sidewalks, but are the gravel paths by the side of the road considered sidewalks? Like Tuttle Creek, right? That has a sidewalk, sidewalk, I guess, going all the way from there to the city from the donut shop. You know the donut shop, right? Yeah, but it's made out of gravel. Would that be part of their repairs and jurisdiction? Or would that be more part of, like, a road jurisdiction?
I think that's, that's a trail we put in specifically with the screenings that Commissioner Morse was speaking of. I believe he's talking from Casement all the way down to, similar to the IHOP or Dunkin' Donuts area on McCall. So that was a specific trail we put in with millings and screenings, but there is another sidewalk coming down Hays Drive that'll catch Casement all the way to McCall and that's under construction currently. But the trail will remain. We don't anticipate paving that trail.
And I was thinking of the northeast, the trail in the Northeast Park that's all millings.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to have some questions about what the nature of that was.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any, Aaron, you got any questions? All right, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, are there any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we. Turn that back on. I move that we approve resolution number zero nine one nine two three Delta appointing the 2023 Americans with Disabilities Act ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for the city of Manhattan.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That's it for the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this September nineteenth meeting.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, please call the roll again.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Meeting adjourned.